Let's call this meeting ordered. We want to prove the agenda. Have a roll call, huh? I'm sorry, let's have a roll call. For the commission. Commissioner Burst.
President.
Commissioner Barnard.
President.
Chairman.
President.
We're going to approve the agenda. I have a motion to accept the agenda, approve it.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda set forth.
Second.
First vote on it. Commissioner Burst. Mr. Barnard. Chair votes aye. Do we have, we have a guest speaker? Anybody?
No one signed up if they wanted to, no.
Would you like to ask Carlos to explain that to us about the, we done. We haven't voted on it yet.
No, yeah, we can actually cover it when we get to it, whenever.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Okay. It'll approve the minutes. I hear a motion.
I make a motion.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Burst.
Well, I got discussions, I would like before we vote on it, correction.
Oh, yes, there's any discussion on it.
Yes. Just for point of correction here, on the January 25th minutes, I voted in the affirmative on the Southern Georgia Regional Commission Board of Directors. Also, I voted in the affirmative on the resolution of 2021-03 establishing the qualification fee for Ware County Sheriff. And also on item B, resolution 2021-04, under government agreement with the city of Waycross for election services. The minutes reflected, I voted nay, but I voted aye on those.
I appreciate that, I'm not sure how that happened.
Just want to, for point of clarification, that the minister also indicated I voted in the affirmative on all of them.
Okay. Is there any more? Discussion on that?
There was, there was three items.
You got anything?
Okay, got it.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Burst?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Haven't voted on it yet, don't.
Okay, now, we want to vote on the, I hear a motion.
Make a motion.
I second it.
Call it a vote. Commissioner Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Approve the minute. Now, we've, we've got a motion on this agenda for the special election on the fill the vacancy of the commission post three. We had, do we have any discussion on that? Not many votes on it. On the resolution 2021-05, special election to fill the vacancy of the commission.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Before we, if I may, before we have the election superintendent come up and explain a bit about the resolution at this point.
Okay.
Commissioners, I think before you, it's something that the attorney drew up for you to, you know, the board here have to officially notify us that there's a vacancy and set the qualifying fee for that, for that seat. So that's what you, that's what you have in front of you, the setting for that. Since I'm here, I just want to let you know that I don't want to get ahead of my board. We made, my board meet on tomorrow. And we'll take the resolution, they're going to know that, you know, y'all have requested that we set the call, I mean, we called for the election and the qualifying period. And it's up to the board to decide at what, you know, time to hold the election. But staff, we're going to, we're going to recommend November. At the same time, the city is going to have their city election, and we can put both of them together. And, you know, we'll still be using the same amount of pole workers from that whole nine yards, but it'll save us on, on a technician, paying for a technician to come down to run all the equipment and all that good stuff. So it'd be a, it'd be a little cost savings if we could put it together, and it'd be a little bit less confusing, and also to give our staff a little time to breathe during the summer. And hopefully kind of like, you know, regroup and do some additional training for all pole workers and, and staff and get ready for, you know, upcoming elections.
Okay. And for me, Mr. Chair, so your board will basically determine what date the election will be?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and November the 2nd will be the, I guess, the optimal time because they will be having some city elections, if I understand it.
Yes, the city election will be held November 2nd.
And it will save a little bit, like you say, on the cost because the county is going to bear the cost anyway, so.
And the city will pay for their portion because that's what y'all decided at the last minute. But, and so, but if we no additional, you know, if we split it up, the additional cost would be the technician that would have to come down in order to help run all the equipment and, you know, and, you know, keep everything going. But as far as, you know, it's the same amount of staff, same amount of pole workers needed and all that good stuff, we're just, the only thing different is we'll have a couple precincts open in the county, and we'll have the city precinct open for the city voters to vote on the city election, and then District 3 voters will vote at their precinct during the election day at their, you know, for their commissioner.
Okay, and I think we discussed it briefly in our work session about the time element, and we would be within that time period of, no, what, no less than, what, 165 days or something like that, no, I mean, no more than 365 days and no less than, I think it's like 100 and 20 days.
Yeah, and I think in the memo that the attorney drafted, we had basically three options.
Right.
You know, and so we decided to go, you know, being a little selfish with the staff and trying to give the staff a little bit of breathing room, you know, this year because, you know, the staff worked, you know, the November election worked through Thanksgiving, we worked through Christmas, they worked through New Years, it'd be good to have at least some time during the summer to, to take a breather, to get reorganized, you know, do some training. So that's a little selfish part on, on us trying to make sure my staff is, is, over the past year has been working really hard trying to, it's been a tough year for elections all over the place, you know.
Yeah, I think that would be a wise and prudent thing to do also, you know, I mean, especially, it wouldn't be really necessary to try to have it any earlier, other than just having it earlier.
Correct.
To have it November the 2nd.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
How many days did we miss to have Mr. Carter's seat in the sheriff's election? How many days was it that we missed it by? I know there's a couple of silverback in there, wasn't there?
Yeah, because if I recall correctly, I think the sheriff was at the 62-day period, I think 60 days, I think probably would have been about the same.
Well, there are differing rules that apply because with the, with the sheriff, you don't have the rule, the 120 days to 365 days, so the way that it shakes out, it would have had, I think he would have had to resign significantly earlier, so I don't believe it would have been, you know, a week or two or anything like that, I think it would have been earlier. I have not sat down and calculated that up, though, we'd have to sit down and figure it out.
I wonder why they're different between the sheriff's election and anybody else's?
Well, it, well, it's because, because they are all different, every, you know, every position is different. The sheriff's is statutory, and so it's just a directive from the, you know, from the Georgia statutes, from the official code of Georgia. And you all, the commissioner positions are directed also statutory, but through local legislation, and so that, that is contained within your own Ware County local legislation. And so that's why those two deadlines are different. But, but, but really it is, you know, if you were filling a different constitutional officer position, there, there's different statutes for each one.
Yeah, because I even noticed in reading it, Steve, even like the clerk and the probate judge, like I say, everyone has its own set of rules, I guess, you know. Some of them are similar, but some of them are different also.
And that's why I leaned on Jennifer.
And I will say, you know, we spent, we spent a good bit of time making sure we got it right because we wanted to, but, but Ware County does have local legislation that, that directs us, so we were, we were acting under that authority.
Yeah. But at the day that was set for the sheriff's election, was that the maximum date? Was that the minimum date? Could we have postponed that election until June?
No, like I said earlier, we tried to look at that because we were, we were interested in doing so, but, and I don't have that language right in front of me, but as I recall, I think it said, you know, it has to be this certain amount of time, but also the first election date after that. And so the March date was a non-negotiable, it was, it was just directed by the timing of it. Now, to that question, you know, had the sheriff passed away a week earlier or a week later, I think that could have affected when that election was. But, you know, that was obviously not a decision we made, that was just the Lord's, the Lord's Day that he had prepared for him, so.
Yeah. Okay. How soon would it be before we could put the, ask for the one cent tax to be added back to it?
I am not sure.
Would that be?
We might have to check with the attorney on that one because I know we had it twice, and I think after you do it twice is extended time. It's like a year?
I believe it's a year, 12 months after, so it'd be, have to be 12 months after this past November. And then you wouldn't start collecting it until April of the following year.
Yeah. So we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to put it on in November then?
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir, you would, yes, sir, that would be 12 months.
That's what I was asking, would we be able to, if we wanted to?
Think of the T-sploss, look, the T-sploss expires.
2023, it expires, yes, 2023, I believe it's March, March 30th is the last day it collects.
I believe we'd be wasting our time if we tried to put it all about before the T-sploss expires. That's my opinion.
Y'all just, y'all just give us direction on the board of elections because we don't have a dog in the fight other than trying to make sure it's on the ballot when y'all request it and you call for that election.
Okay. We got plenty of time, we can bring it up.
Look at the timeline and let you all know for sure, you know, what the options are, and then certainly y'all can make a decision as to, you know, what would be best, but we will, we'll, we'll get you that response, get you an answer for sure on what the timeline is available.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Any more on that? Okay, we don't have the resolution, do we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Let's, let's have a vote on that.
Did we get a motion on it? Did we get a motion on it? We did, we did, and I was thinking we did, but we didn't.
We had a motion there.
They're making motion, we set this resolution.
I second it.
Second. Let's vote. Commissioner Burst.
Aye.
Barnard. Chairman votes aye. All right. So we had it for that post three, okay. A roof replacement at the Ware County Health Department.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to speak to this, this is a roof replacement that's been needing to be done for some time now. It's a roof replacement at the Ware County Health Department for the section of the women's health wing. We asked for proposals from various local roofers, and we've only received one back, which was from Brantley Roofing Company in the amount of $21,080. And their proposal is still good, it's dated from September of 2020, but it would verify that their proposal still stands. So we would need to have that approved so we can take care of that business.
If we're over this money, where'd it come from to pay for it?
It's coming out of the 20, excuse me, the 2014, splopped out of the public facilities account. There's roughly, I want to say there's roughly about $1.1 million there, and it's to maintain all county buildings.
So the air conditioner for the courthouse, that's where that money came from?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I move for approval on that, Mr. Chair.
You want to?
Make a motion.
Anything else on it? I'll ask for a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
So, that's voted on it. Commissioner Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now we got the road restriping and bid advertisement. We have some prices on that. Want to make a, we just want to do part, a part of it then, is that correct? We're going to do?
Yes, sir. It's actually the, the ones that ranked in a priority of number one, there's 16 roads there, and those 16 roads for restriping totals $83,924.26.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That'll be just the ones that's in that road, in that part right there.
Yes, sir.
There would be some of them that, that don't need it as bad as others, and we want to take some of them out, but, I don't know, Brandon, he probably could answer this on that. Would there be some that could be moved around if it's not that important?
Absolutely, that is merely the staff's attempt to make a list and prioritize a list for y'all to give input to us on, of yay, you like that, or no, you want to move this, or believe this, any changes about that can be made as y'all see fit.
Okay. We could move them out if we had to.
Yes, sir.
We're just trying to get a plan on, of attack, and we prioritize them based on that and hoping to get y'all's input on our list, and then we'll have a, a plan on how to proceed with it. In fact, we're going to try to do it in four phases, of about $80,000, $90,000 per phase to get all of it done, similar to the way we approached the Sun project that we've been working through.
You think we'd get a better price if we did it all at one time?
Uh, that's a good question, I can ask that to the, to the striping people to see if they think they would be regarded more favorably, you know, if it was $400,000 worth of striping versus?
Versus $80,000, yeah. If he came down and got set up to go, he probably want to do all of it if he could.
You could probably bid it as an alternate, just so you can get prices that way, you get prices just on, say, the priority number one, you can bust it up however you know, and then you can evaluate all of your bid prices based on what you got.
Yeah, yeah.
Would we have the money and splosh to pay for that?
Yes, sir. It comes out of, and that's what I was going to mention, we have a line item in the single county T-sploss for resurface, no, excuse me, for restriping. And so that, by the time you get it out, you're probably looking at another, what, couple of months, couple, two and a half months before we actually get them started. So, yes, there's, there's money there in the account to do that.
I guess it would all depend on what kind of price they gave us. I mean, if we save $100,000 by doing all of it, it'd be worth it.
Be worth it, go ahead.
I mean, if you do, or save $20,000, you know, might have to bust it up. We might need that roof or something else. Have a roof.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, so how, how, Brandon, how quick are we needing to make a commitment on this to have it done? Is it something that we could maybe like table till you can find out if the company's willing to, you know, give a reduction in the price if we do it in volume?
Yes, sir, if y'all want me to look into that, we can proceed in that manner, and I could get back with you the next time we have a meeting.
Okay, so that won't throw a cog in the wheel in the thing if we wait till the next meeting to do it?
No, sir, we're just, some of those roads on that list have been, we've been getting a lot of calls about, complaining about the stripes, striping or lack thereof, so that's why we were trying to hurry up and get started on, on something because of the amount of calls we've had about them. So it's no, no emergency, it just helps relieve some of the complaints we had.
And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it, I posed a question about the T-sploss types, and my understanding that the city has a portion of this T-sploss?
Yes, sir.
Because I was wondering on these roads why it wasn't in it, you know, city streets on there, but now I understand you say that the city has their list and had the funds allocated for that.
They created a budget, we created a budget, and they created a budget, we split the T-sploss money 50/50, so they would have their list.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
May I just like to make a motion that we just table this until he can find out?
That's what I was thinking of. Yeah, okay. What do you think?
As long as we can bring it up shortly, we'll tell people, call them as soon as possible.
Like I say, he, he's going to check on it with the, the, I guess, the company that does the striping to see if they will give a reduction based on the volume.
We can check and then try to have the meeting, our second meeting during that time period itself.
Is these figures here you got, you already got these, they came from contract?
No, sir, that's just an estimate.
Oh, that's just?
Engineer's.
Engineer's, okay. I see what I see. Are the words, it could come under that or over that, really?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to table that?
I, I think we did have a, a motion from Commissioner Burst, but I'm not sure we ever had a second formally, although I think.
I said we table it, so we can get an estimate.
Okay. We table it.
Okay.
And just need to formally, I know, we need to formally take a vote to table it, though, we've got a motion and a second, so just all in favor.
Let's need to vote on it, yeah. I've heard a motion to table it, and we have a second. No more discussion, let's vote on it. Commissioner Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a county matter, do you have a report?
No, sir, I mentioned in the work session that I thought that DOT sent me back a follow-up or, yes, sir, a follow-up on the traffic light at 520 and Fulford Road, but it was, actually, it was a duplicate of what I received before, but to bring you up to speed on what, what's going there, the, the bids, the first time the bids were, they came in too high, and they rebid it, and they did get a selective contractor. And once they get the contract signed, they'll issue a notice of proceeding, they're supposed to let us know. So hopefully, it would be a short period of time before they get started on the, the traffic light there on 520 and Fulford.
We, we've already done our part, and as far as.
Yeah, we do have to, we do have to get Georgia Power to put up the streetlights. They do require streetlights, so once we get the plans, and they haven't, they hadn't sent those plans yet, have they, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't think so, they hadn't sent the plans, but once we get the plans, we'll turn those over to Georgia Power so they know where to put the streetlights.
Should there be one on each side of the highway?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, you got anything? You got anything, Mr.?
Well, just, like, just continue to remind our citizens to wear your mask, you know, try to stay safe, wash your hands, social distance, and again, the loss of Commissioner Carter, you know, I still think that was a great loss to the county, and we, our prayers still with his family. And also, while the election superintendent is here, I just want to, I guess, give kudos to him and his staff. I was talking with someone that don't, doesn't even stand Waycross, as a matter of fact, it's from Heinzville, the election people over there, and they were commending Ware County for the efficient operation they were running over here, and they wanted to try to find out some of the things that they. they were running over here, and they wanted to try to find out some of the things that they were doing here because they really had a lot of praise for election superintendents in the office and the way they were running the election, especially with all the election that was going on. So, anyway, just wanted to send the kudos to you and to your staff for what you're doing. And I think that's great, you know, that Ware County, I mean, they pulled me to the side and wondered what is that we were doing over here, you know? And I said, well, you know, we got a new election superintendent, you know, and he's trying to run the operation like he sees fit. So, they may be calling you to try to get some pointers. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. Thank you, Carter. Thank you for the good job. Anything else? We'll adjourn. I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Vote on it. Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Barnard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meeting adjourned.